Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody here in our audience and those watching on TV at home to the October 19th meeting of the Pitt County Planning Board. Ms. Beers, may we have a roll call, please?
Fay Barefoot, Frank Braddam.
Here.
Jacob Cox.
Here.
Lynn Evans.
Here.
Lyman Hardy.
Here.
Wanda Harrington, Thomas Harris, Taylor Keith.
Here.
Clay Malloy, Porter Stokes.
Here.
William Wooton.
Here.
Thank you, Beth. Before we begin, I'd like to welcome back and congratulate our four members who have been reappointed to the Planning Board, Frank Braddam, Jacob Cox, Wanda Harrington, and William Wooton. The first thing on our agenda tonight is the election of officers and the appointment of our Executive Secretary. And Ms. Overton, will you take us through that?
Yes, I will. Good evening. It is that time of the year again that we do need to elect a Chairman and a Vice Chairman for this Board. And at this time, we will open the nominations for the position of Chairman.
I'd like to nominate Frank Braddam.
And nominations do not require a second. Any further nominations? There being none, we would close the nominations at this time for the position of Chairman, and if you'd like to call for a vote.
Okay. Can we have a vote all in favor of Frank Braddam being elected Chairman of the Pitt County Planning Board? Raise your right hand. Unanimous.
And at this time, if we could open the floor for nominations for the position of Vice Chairman?
Do we have a nominee for Vice Chairman?
Nominate Ms. Fay Barefoot.
Any further nominees?
Seeing no further nominees, at this point, it would be appropriate to go ahead and close those nominations, and if you want to call for a vote.
Okay. All in favor of electing Fay Barefoot as Vice Chairman of the Planning Board? Raise your right hand. Unanimous.
Well, congratulations, Mr. Braddam and Ms. Barefoot. Also, at this time, consistent with your rules of procedure, it would be appropriate to reappoint James Rhodes as the Planning Director, as the Executive Secretary to this Board.
Do we have a motion to...
I'll make that...
We've got a motion to reappoint James Rhodes as the Executive Secretary of the Planning Board? Any other?
A second to that motion.
We've got a motion and a second, all in favor of reappointing James Rhodes as the Executive Secretary. Raise your right hand. Opposed?
Thank you that takes care of elections, and if you'd like to take a moment at this time to reseat for the officers that are present, if you do so.
Okay. We're going to take a minute and change seats real quick.
Welcome back to the Pitt County Planning Board meeting. We're reconvening after the reorganization of the Board, and I do appreciate the Board's support with my chairmanship, and I'm sure Fay Barefoot also appreciates the support as Vice Chairman. At this time, I think the entire Board would welcome and join me in giving Taylor Keith a wonderful round of applause. He's been a great Chairman. Taylor, you've done a very good job.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for the September 21st meeting. The minutes, when you pack it. Do I hear any corrections to the minutes? If not, I'd like a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Thank you very much. The next item will be the public hearing on the Pitt County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Eric Gobidbe doing the presentations. Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is sort of the... coming on the culmination of a long process that we've had with updating this Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Go through sort of a brief presentation. Much of this information is that many of the Board members have heard at the public forums that we held recently, but for the benefit of anybody that's in the audience or that might be at home watching this, we'll go through it very quickly so they can have an idea of what we are proposing for tonight. First off, what is the Comprehensive Land Use Plan? Well, it's a guide for managing development in Pitt County. It's what we consider to be a blueprint for growth. It applies to all areas that aren't located within a municipal jurisdiction, and does establish a planning horizon of 20 years. So, this isn't something that we anticipate over the next five years or maybe even 10 years. This is a long-range plan that extends upwards of 20 years. This is the future land use map from 2002. As you can see, it pretty well follows what our zoning map looks like. Some areas that we had looked at in terms of updating this plan were floodplain areas, which are identified as the agriculture-open natural resource areas, as well as these areas that we identified as rural-commercial crossroad communities. So, as part of this update process, those were two areas of this map that we looked at pretty heavily in terms of whether those areas were appropriate, one being the floodplain maps, they've been updated since 2004. And the crossroad areas, then, as we mentioned before to this Board, whether or not that that designation was appropriate for certain of these crossroads. Also, as part of this process, we identified emerging issues that have occurred over the last nine to 10 years since the original 2002 plan was adopted. Many of these are fairly major, such as adoption accounting-wide zoning. We've had some development rezoning activity, floodplain maps, as I mentioned, transportation issues, soil issues. And then, the one that sort of came up as a part of this process is community health, and we'll expand on that in just a little bit. But also, things such as schools, interconnectivity, protecting our farmlands and natural resources, as well as preserving the economic development viability of the county. Now, with the community health, in 2010, the Pitt County Health Department was awarded this Communities Putting Prevention to Work Grant. It's an initiative that's aimed at policy systems and environmental changes, with the goal being to increase levels of physical activity, to improve nutrition, and decrease obesity rates throughout the entire community, not just certain segments, but across the county as a whole. It was a CDC grant. It was... Pitt County Health Department was selected as a recipient of $1.6 million, one of 50 in the nation, and two in the state of North Carolina, the other being the Appalachian District. And as part of this process, we had to identify where in the county's land use plan that we could help to improve the community health. And through this, we determined that our best route for doing that was to ensure that land use patterns benefit public health, in improving access to healthy foods, as well as improving access to recreational facilities in the county. So, with this, we developed and updated the goals and objectives of the 2002 plan. The purpose statement of the plan is to protect the public health, safety, and welfare by promoting reasonable, orderly, and efficient growth, to ensure that development includes a variety of land uses, is sensitive to environmental and social concerns, and maintains the county's character and assets. In the 2002 plan, we did have seven goals. Those were growth and development, land use, transportation, appearance, community services and facilities, natural environment, and then implementation and administration. And what we've done is, for the proposed goals and objectives, we added the two that I've highlighted on the screen, housing and community health. Housing is essentially... it's comprised of some goals and objectives that were in the previous plan, but we determined they needed to be broken in their own separate categories. So, that's where housing came from. Community health, as I mentioned, is a new goal. It's a major goal in terms of our plan. There's actually four separate goals within that that I'll describe in a little more detail in a minute, but this was an outgrowth of the CPPW grant, and so that's why we added into this update. Now, the first goal and objective is growth and development, and the goal for this is to manage physical growth and development and preserve and protect the county's physical character and assets. And we can do this by ensuring that we have coordinated planning and growth with the municipalities in the county, as well as by encouraging a balance of growth throughout the county, and also preserving the rural character of the county as an asset. Second goal is land use, to promote an orderly and efficient land use development pattern. And in order to accomplish this, we want to try to minimize land use conflicts, particularly between residential areas and things like high-intensity livestock operations. We also want to try to preserve large tracts of agricultural farmland, and then also to maximize accessibility between places where people live, where they work, where they shop, et cetera. Third goal is transportation, and that goal is to provide a transportation system which allows a safe, efficient, and convenient movement of people and goods. And we can do this through ensuring that we continue to coordinate our transportation planning efforts through the Greenville Urban Area MPO, the RPO, as well as the Transportation Improvement Program, as well as a complete... providing alternative means of transportation, and that means encouraging a complete streets policy for development. And what this is, is where we have multiple means of transportation on a street, whether it's bicycling paths, whether it's sidewalks for pedestrian traffic, and also vehicular traffic and public transit. Fourth goal is appearance. We want to maintain and enhance the character and identity of the rural areas of Pitt County, primarily through limiting development of unsightly uses. Also, we want to try to protect the visual quality or the aesthetics of our major corridors and gateways. Fifth goal is community services and facilities. We want to provide efficient, high-quality public services and facilities to serve plan, growth, and development. As this Board is aware, the county does not maintain any sort of public infrastructure, but we want to make sure that we're continuing to coordinate with utility providers to ensure that any extensions or phased extensions of sewer and water into the county will meet the needs of the county's residents in the future. Another this also is recreational opportunities, so we want to be sure that we're continuing to provide multiple recreational opportunities throughout the county, and also coordinating with the Board of Education for the planning of future school sites. Sixth goal is to protect water quality, significant natural features, and other natural resources. And we do have a local enforcement programs for soil erosion, sanitation control, and floodplain and stormwater, and we want to make sure that we're continuing to maintain an active enforcement program and to enhance on those programs, and also to protect our floodplains in the county from inappropriate development. Seventh goal is housing. We want to promote a range of safe and affordable housing. We want to have development that provides a variety of housing types, densities, and price ranges, and also we want to continue to support the county's tenure plan in chronic homelessness by providing housing services that assist low-income and chronically homeless persons. The eighth goal is community health. As I mentioned, this one actually has four separate goals, and these are all areas that are designed to achieve better community health. The first being parks and recreational facilities. Again, as I mentioned with the community facilities goal, we want to make sure there's an equitable distribution of park facilities throughout the county. We have some wonderful facilities with Boydley Park and the county's Alice Keane District Park. We want to make sure that people in the areas of the county that can't easily access those parks, that they're not excluded from having recreational opportunities. Access to healthy foods, we want to make sure that we're continuing to encourage things like food co-ops, community gardens, and we want to try to discourage what we consider to be food deserts, where large areas of population don't have access to things such as fresh fruits and vegetables, and only have access to things like convenience stores that provide sodas and chips and occasional cheese biscuit. Access to alternative modes of transportation, as I mentioned, we want to try to increase the levels of pedestrian and bicycle traffic, as well as to encourage more complete streets policies. And then, complete neighborhoods, which would be to ensure that our development regulations encourage things like community gardens, complete streets, et cetera. Now, this is just some examples of the types of things that we're looking at in terms of community health. The top is the county's community garden, which is located at the Alice Keane District Park, also the farmer's market. We want to try to encourage more uses of this type throughout the county so that people can have better access to fruits and vegetables. And then, another example of complete streets, where you have bicycle lanes, sidewalks, and then vehicular traffic is also allowed as well. The ninth goal is implementation and administration, and basically, this is what we're doing tonight and what we've done with our public forums. We want to ensure that the land use plan is effectively used, implemented, monitored, and updated, and so we want to make sure that we're continually getting public input from the citizens of the county to ensure that we're meeting their needs as we update this plan in the future. Future land use map. The 2002 land use map had six categories: agriculture-open natural resource, rural residential agricultural, suburban residential, rural-commercial crossroad community, and commercial light-industrial, and then industrial. And we have done some tweaks to this. This is the 2002 map, as I showed you before. You can see the scattering of the rural-commercial crossroad communities throughout the county, as well as the predominantly 100-year floodplain that was agriculture-open natural resource. With this land use update, we're proposing to revise some of the existing 2002 categories, as well as add some additional ones. The agriculture-open natural resource, rural residential, and suburban residential remain largely unchanged, but the rural-commercial crossroad community, we propose to split that into two categories, one being rural-commercial, which is a crossroad that would serve predominantly a surrounding area. It's not going to serve a very large population, maybe a little corner store, maybe a crossroad with a church. It's going to serve just that sort of immediate vicinity. And then, the commercial crossroad community areas like Stokes, Chicod, Blackjack, they're going to serve a larger population. They may have more than multiple services, like multiple convenience stores, or a large church, or maybe even a utility provider. So, we want to make sure that these two categories are appropriate for the areas they're located in. Commercial has changed a little slightly. We took the light industrial off, just focusing more on a commercial aspect, and then heavy commercial industrial, predominantly is a more intensive land use category. So, the future land use map that we're proposing, you see, it has not changed significantly from the 2002 plan. The floodplain areas that make up the agriculture-open natural resource area have changed some. Some areas, they've increased; some areas, they've decreased. But we want to make sure that the 2004 plans that were adopted are reflected on this map. The other areas you can see are the rural-commercial crossroad communities, where we have split those. You see areas like Blackjack, Washington, or Hollywood's crossroads here. You see those areas have remained. There might be some slight changes in the configuration of those areas, but for the most part, those have remained the same. And then, the smaller crossroad areas that we've now designated rural-commercial are located throughout the county. The other feature to mention is that the Southwest Bypass is now shown on the map, and we've... in some of these areas, particularly west of Aiden and southwest of Winterville, we've scaled back some of the suburban residential in those areas, and have in effect made the Southwest Bypass sort of a growth boundary for that area. In response to some of the comments we received at one of our public forums, the Town of Farmville did pass a resolution in September to request revisions to this future land use map. Request is to revert the suburban residential areas surrounding the town's ETJ back to the extent that's shown on that 2002 map. Just to give you some comparison here, 2002 on the left-hand side, 2011 on the right, you can see what we had proposed originally was to sort of decrease the areas north of Farmville and to the southeast, as well as a few areas here to the northeast. So, the town would like to revert back to that 2002 boundary. We, as staff, don't have any objections to that. We just have not changed the map as of yet because we wanted the Board to take action on this resolution before we proceeded with changing the map. But you've got a copy of the resolution in front of you there, if you'd like to take a look at it. One other item that we did, as I mentioned, was the public forums. We did have five public forums, September 13th through October 13th. We were Arthur Christian Church and Bell Arthur, Belvoir Elementary, Aiden Griffin High School, Stokes School, and Chicod School. Fairly sparsely attended forums, but we feel like we did get some good information out of a few of them. This was in Aiden, at Aiden Griffin High School. This was our presentation. We did have about four or five people showed up, so we had a... for this round of public forums, that was a pretty good attendance, we felt like. But we made through our presentation. Stokes School, we only had about three people show up, but again, got some good feedback from those few folks that showed up, and then a couple of the folks there. And then, our final forum was at Chicod Elementary, or Chicod School. We kind of got pushed into the media center to do some after-schoolers in the cafeteria, but we made the most of what we had, and we felt like we got some good input there too as well. Now, as far as the upcoming schedule, as I mentioned, we're sort of in the short throes of this process. Tonight, we're presenting the final plan to the Board, followed by the public hearing, and then December, we're looking to have a public hearing by the Board of County Commissioners for hopeful adoption of the update. So, with that, moving to staff recommendation. Planning staff does recommend approval of the proposed update to the land use plan. Ask the Planning Board for a recommendation of approval to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. And with this recommendation, we do also recommend revising the future land use map to meet the resolution prepared by the Town of Farmville. And so, with that, Ms. Chairman, I'd like to open up for public hearing.
Eric, thank you very much. This time, we will open the public hearing regarding the Pitt County Comprehensive Land Use Plan change and the new land use plan. And we have had in the back a sign-up sheet if anyone wanted to sign up to speak in the public hearing. If there are speakers, we would like for you to limit your comments to three minutes, and if you're representing a group or an organization, you can be limited to five minutes. Do we have any sign? Oh, you wish to speak?
I can see a sign-up sheet. Go back to your...
Okay. Well, that's all right. If you give us your name and residence.
Hi. My name is Jean Wilkerson. I live here in Granville, but I'm here really representing the Health Department here in Pitt County. That's where I work now, and I'm working with this Communities Putting Prevention to Work Grant. And with that, it's an overall structural grant designing to make Pitt County a healthier living place. And I am here saying how happy we are in the Health Department that we have worked so well with the Planning Department and with James and all of his staff, in trying to bring in a lot of health initiatives into this project. And as he said, you know, one of our goals in the Health Department is to help fight obesity. And by doing so, we're looking at how to structure the environment around our citizens that makes making healthier choices easier choices. And then, as you can see, that's built right into our planning. So, we are very pleased that the Planning Department has opened its arms to us, and we have embraced, and we will go forward, working with the Health Department, I mean, working with planning in all of our areas to try to make Pitt County a much happier, healthier community.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other... anyone else that wished to speak before we close the public hearing? If not, I declare the public hearing closed. Eric, let me say on behalf of the citizens and this Board, I want to also compliment the Planning Board staff for all of the work, this has been in the Board itself, because this has been going on for months. We've been working on the land use plan for, I'm not exactly sure when it started, about this time last year, if I remember.
It's been about a year and a half, yes, sir.
And so, it's a lot of work. It's a very important document for future planning, so commend... we commend you and James and the entire staff for the research that you've done and hard work.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this plan as presented by the Planning Department. Also, we'd make a... including that motion that the resolutions from the Town of Farmville be honored, and to give them every chance to embrace their community and grow. I suck at that.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the proposed Comprehensive Land Use Plan and send the recommendation to the County Commissioners. Do we have any discussion?
I'd like to ask one question about the Farmville resolution.
Sure.
What are the different permitted uses between what they've asked for and what y'all originally recommended?
The difference is primarily what would be if development was to come out there and request a rezoning, in terms of what the recommendation might be. Suburban residential category is a little bit more... has a little bit broader range of uses that could be permitted if it's meeting things like... you always hear us talking about rezoning is about locational criteria, whether it's at a major state road or intersection. The suburban residential has a little more flexibility in terms of aligning that type of development in those areas. But in terms of residential use, there's really not much difference. The zoning dictates the residential out there, and being it's primarily residential, they wouldn't have to come through for a rezoning to develop as residential.
So, the suburban residential is still less restrictive?
It... I would say less restrictive, it's just got a broader range of what could be permitted out there.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? I call for a vote, all in favor of the motion, signified by raising your right hand. All opposed, like so. Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. With that, we'll turn it over to Brian Jones.
Next item is the preliminary flood insurance study and flood insurance rate maps. Brian Jones?
And I'll do a brief introduction of Brian and come on up too. You probably haven't seen Brian as one of our planning staff members to date too much, but with this new project of the update of the floodplain maps, he is now our resident certified floodplain manager for Pitt County. So, he's been through all the schooling. He is the man to call about floodplain questions. So, with that, the... So with that, tonight, he's going to preview some of the changes that are coming up on the floodplain maps and also be available for some questions. We also have in the audience a couple of people in from the state agency. You may know that North Carolina is one... Is the only, if not one of the two states in the whole nation that has been given authority from FEMA to update its own floodplain maps, update and maintain. So again, we get a little bit better local service and really an opportunity to update maps a little bit sooner than if we had to go through the federal level. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, James. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Reasoning in front of you tonight is just to give a brief presentation, just highlighting the major changes in the preliminary flood insurance study and the flood insurance rate maps. The North Carolina Flood Mapping Program's goal is to scope each county and the state every two to two and a half, three and a half years and revise those flood maps. So with that being said, May 2nd, 2006 was our scoping meeting that was held in Pitt County. That meeting was to identify the stream-specific mapping needs and to prioritize streams to be studied. And now here we are in 2011, June 8th, we received those updated flood insurance studies and the firm panels, which do reflect the proposed additions and changes to the base flow elevations within the county. Just to give you guys an idea of what we're dealing with here, here's a screenshot of our floodplain overlay to some aerial photographs, a major portion of north of the river, the Pecoson area. If you see down... If you're not familiar with the area, down in the lower... This area here is Alpine Taylor Road and Saintsville Road. So all this area, this is the effective map, and there's the unnumbered A zones. Same exact picture for the proposed maps, takes out all that unnumbered A zone out and gives a more detailed study along Grandam Creek. Just another shot to give you a better view of that. This is the effective map. Here's the map maintenance of the proposed map showing the unnumbered A zone gone. Another area that's going to be affected by this, the updated maps, is down in Griffin. If you see the light shaded blue area is down along Queen Street, right along where Queen Street and the railroad intersect, there's a small portion of unnumbered A zones there. The map maintenance will take that out, mainly make it a shaded X and some AE zone. So just a snapshot of what we are dealing with. The current floodplain, there's 148.17 square miles, Zone A being a good chunk of that, 23.9 square miles. So the proposed will bring it down to 129 square miles with no unnumbered A zones in the county. So going forward, we... What we're in right now is actually, we're in the midst of the 90-day appeal period and protest period, which started on the 21st of September, and will end the 19th of December. We will be following the planning meeting tonight with a public information session. The meeting will start at 6:30. And based on any solicited technical data or comments, there will... The effective data of the new maps will be determined by FEMA. Once that effective data is determined, the Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing on the new D firms and the FIS reports, and the county will also have to amend the flood damage prevention ordinance. Again, that meeting we're holding tonight is a public information session. We'll be right in this room at 6:30. All this information is available on ncflodmaps.com, where you can actually pull those panels up and download the effective and the map maintenance panels. And that's it. Thank you.
Any questions, Brian? Thank you very much. I appreciate it. James in his information session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo a couple of things. Again, I appreciate the four planning board members that have resigned for another three year term. All four of you really appreciate your willingness to serve on this board, and again, the consistency as we move forward with a continued project of the land use plan update is very important to have all of you that are very knowledgeable in this, and as we move forward, hopefully with the implementation of that plan, you guys are already one step ahead. So we're real proud and real interested in getting that plan in place so we can begin the implementation process. Secondly, with that, I'd also like to acknowledge Eric's good work in leading this process. This is one of the... It's a major undertaking, as we've mentioned, and he's done an outstanding job in getting us to this point. So just wanted to mention that. Onward to the other informational items. CSX, again, that was a rezoning request that came before you last month. Want to give you an update that the commissioners considered this at its Monday meeting on October the 17th, and after a lively public hearing and also some good discussion among the commissioners, this was agreed upon with the rezoning to the conditional district rezoning there at the intersection of Futural Robinson Road and State and Mill Road. So CSX will begin construction, I understand, fairly soon with that particular office structure. So that is being moved forward. Just to remind you where the particular site is, it's just adjacent to the Rose Brother Paving Company there on the opposite side of the railroad track, and again, in this corner, right at the intersection of State and Mill and Futural Robinson Road, this tract is the one where the office and crew facility building is to be constructed. Few other items in your package tonight, the monthly report. Would like to mention also, you'll see it in next month's monthly report, but we're getting a lot of mileage out of our partnership with the Public Health Office. Eric and I were at the planners' conference in Charlotte a couple of weeks ago, and we were fortunate enough to be part of a presentation dealing with the partnership between community health and planning. So again, Eric did an outstanding job there. Really appreciate... This is funny. We talked about it a little bit here when Dr. Morrow was here from the Public Health Office about how planning started in the field, from the field of public health, kind of separated for a while, looks like we're coming back together, and it really is a hot topic among the planning community now. So we're looking at other opportunities. A public health educator myself will be attending a public health organization meeting here in town in a couple of weeks to give a similar presentation about our partnership. So as people may be interested in the community, whether it's civic groups or other things, we're really out trying to get the word out about making Pitt County much more healthier and a better place to live in. So not that it isn't good now, but we're just trying to improve things health-wise. Few other items in your package tonight. There are some articles that deal with the Intermodal Transportation Center downtown, maybe looking at a new site for that as compared to the site that's been previously identified. So there's also an article in here, I believe Ms. Wilkerson mentioned it in her comments, about the corner store markets, and we already have one market that's been instrumental in putting fresh fruits and vegetables out front for folks in a more rural area that pretty much historically has not provided such types of foodstuffs. So with that, Mr. Chairman, just a few items that we wanted to mention, and we're open to any questions that you may have for staff tonight.
James, any questions? James with the staff. If not, before we adjourn, I want to remind everyone, Beth wants to speak to us about administrative matters before we leave tonight after we adjourn.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'd like for us to take a moment to remember one of our board members, Wanda Harrington and her family, whose father passed away this past week.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Yes, please convey condolences to Wanda. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.